To approve the agenda as presented, councillor Skelly who was here punctually, councillor Conley who was here punctually, all in favor?
Carry.
Any opposed, motion carried. Declarations of, others were here punctually as well, but I had to pick two. Declarations of interest, I'm hearing none. Staff presentations, our people's survey update, very important. Our city manager, Chris Murray, I'd like him to take the podium, introduce the presentation, and I understand he'll be part of a team that will be presenting this survey, and it's up to members of council to listen carefully, to hear what our staff have said, and what we can best do to be part of this wonderful corporation and serving the public. City manager, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, deputy mayor, and thank you to members of committee. We have a few people in the audience that are somewhat excited for this presentation and the questions that are going to follow, so I'll look further ado. The agenda is as you see, I'll provide some words regarding our introduction, and then we're going to have Dr. John Yardley, the president of Metrics at Work, talk about the background to our survey and the methodology. Laura Fontana is going to speak specifically to the findings, so overall city results, and then I'll come back up with next steps. So with that, this is the framework that we followed, there's four phases, but before I get into the four phases, I'd like to just provide a little bit of context. You may recall, back in 2006, we undertook a similar sort of survey, it was corporate-wide. I recall back then that a good job was done administering the survey, I think where there were some real challenges was on the follow-through. It's easy to, it's easy to survey a group of people per se, the more difficult work is taking the results to the front line and working on the actions that need to be taken in order to change the things you need to change. So 2006, I don't think we had as complete a strategy as we do now. Between 2006 and when this survey was administered last year, there's been numerous surveys done across our organizations, but typically departmentally, sometimes divisionally. You may have heard in the past, you know, Denison, it's a form of surveying our staff, and we've done that kind of work. I think we had an ethics survey as well in 2013, but we've never taken a comprehensive approach as we have here. We did hire, as I mentioned, the Dr. John Yardley's firm, Metrics at Work, for the simple reason that we needed an arms-length third-party expert in survey research, someone that people can fill out the survey and provide it to that will keep it confidential. That was critical in our, in our overall strategy for certain, as well as someone who's done this kind of work for municipalities across Ontario, so, because as you know, we'd like to benchmark ourselves against others, and so John's firm has done a considerable amount of work, and when he gets up here, he'll point that out. There's four phases to this work, as you can see, that will extend from January 2017 to the fall of 2020. So of course, we've completed the survey design, the development, and launch, so that's already done. We're going to talk about those results in a minute, and right now, the survey results have been shared with senior leaders as well as directors, and now we want to share it with you before we start to share the results deeper into the organization through managers, supervisors, and of course, to our front line. So that's where we are right now, we're at phase two, as you can see here. Phase three is about building the, communicating the results, but building the action plans. That takes place in the next few weeks, carrying on for the next several months. And of course, when we build those action plans, we've got to implement them, because we, in three years from now, will be going back out to our organization, and hopefully our survey results are even better than the ones we have here today. So that's the framework. So again, we're, it's a four-phased approach, with us coming back in 2020, surveying our organization once again, hopefully with even better results. The survey focus itself, five basic areas, which the results are going to be communicated by Laura in a few minutes, but engagement, really, there were questions that related to how do people feel about working for the city of Hamilton. Culture, you know, we've been talking about this for some time, relates to our five pillars, and of course, the culture is part of your strategic plan. Workplace ethics and integrity, the code of conduct, and the other matter is related to how do people feel about bringing forward matters of harassment, do they feel they're able to speak to their bosses, or speak to others in the organization to have matters dealt with. Health, safety, and wellness, of course, speaks to your physical and psychological wellness, so we have questions that relate to that. And of course, fundamental to any survey, workforce census and demographics, that speaks to really the profile of our people, and so all of those topics are going to be covered by Laura. So I guess to start with some of the good news, we had 65% of our organization complete the survey, so that's about 4,800 staff out of an organization of 7,800, and that happened for a reason. Certainly, our HR team, Anna, Dawn, and Laura, and many, many supporters within that division, really anchored this whole approach, and they're the ones that came up with strategies for getting the word out and getting people to fill out the surveys. We had ambassadors from across the organization really drive hard to get people to commit to the time to fill out the surveys. By interest, if you benchmark our 65%, on average municipalities in Ontario, about, you get around 61% of the organization filling out, so we are a little bit better than the average, which I think is positive. If you compare back in 2006, when we did this kind of work before, we've got 25% better result than we had back then in terms of people taking the time to fill it out. So I would say we have a pretty good sample of our organization in terms of responses about how people think and feel. And then, of course, the last point here, 70% of our divisions achieving results higher than 80%, in other words, we had lot, most of our divisions, we had better than 80% response. We had a few divisions that weren't quite as high, but we had very, very strong positive turnout, and I think what underpins it all was a commitment to not just getting the word out, but, you know, respecting the important information that they're going to give us and that, you know, we were, people were satisfied that we had rolled it up into a corporate presentation, but certainly, you know, as this thing is implemented further towards the front line, I mean, people want it, their privacy, respect it, and so that's what we're doing, and that commitment to them, I think, is critical, otherwise, I don't think we'd get as many people giving us the results that they did. Just to break this down even further for you, if you compare union versus non-union, you can see the non-union, 21.8% of that 4,800 figure were non-union employees, 78% were unionized, and then it's a further broken down from permanent full-time, permanent part-time, and then temporary full and part-time, so you can see that, you know, this, the results here aren't just management, they're very much, you know, committed to or driven by our front line, so when you hear the results, keep that in the back of your mind. And so with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Yardley to come down, now, he has just flown back from New Zealand, just recently, so I think it was a 30-hour-plus trip, and so he's ready to go, a little bit of jet lag, but good doctor, if you wouldn't mind just coming down and taking care of the next point of our presentation.
Thank you, city manager, for opening up. Dr. John Yardley, welcome, Stephanie has some toothpicks if you need them, to rise open, and great to have you here with your expertise and looking forward to your presentation. Welcome, and glad you got here safely.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deputy Mayor, and the mayor, and councillors, senior staff, and other assorted folks, it's a pleasure to be here. I do have air equalization problems, my eyes are open, so you'll need to speak up if there is a question. It is a pleasure to be here, because everything that I've just heard Chris review is absolutely correct. You had a great response rate, if I could say, I would up what Chris said, this wasn't just very good, I thought it was great. You are a big diverse municipality, and so 65% is something that's very credible, and I want to speak therefore, very briefly, to several of the team members that are here in the HR department, they, and the ambassadors did a terrific job, and therefore, we should have great confidence in the fact that these results reflect the opinions of not just management, because they're only 21% of the survey folks, as you've already just seen, but a very large group of your frontline staff. So without any further ado, let me just go forward therefore to talk very briefly about our background. So we started the equivalent of Metrics at Work in 1999, I was hired in 1982 at Brock University, have completed a PhD in organizational psychology, survey research, statistics, and leadership, and organizational factors are basically the bread and butter of what I've done in terms of my career. The research lab that we started, which was the origin of Metrics at Work, was called the Workplace Health Research Laboratory, we used to say in those days, "Give us a Whirl", because the acronym was Whirl, but it emerged from Brock University in 2007 as an incorporated business. As we separated from Brock University, they supported the development of an incorporated business, they actually took a position in the company that was then sold back to the company after we got established, and so we're now fully independent of Brock University, but as a legacy, all of the ways in which we run our business were based on ethical principles and principles of academic research that were overseen during the first formative years while we were inside the university as a whole. As a background, in terms of the number of organizations, and I won't review those directly with you, you can read them yourselves, but we do have a very large database, and the database comparison is going to be something that Laura will review with you with regard to how the city of Hamilton looks with regard to an external comparison, something that's important to a governance group such as yourselves, and also to the senior executive. So importantly, that is mainly public sector, so the fact that we have 400-plus surveys, 200-plus companies, and 3,000, 300,000 respondents, in actual fact, that's mainly public sector, and you can see that reflected in the numbers below, and most importantly for you folks would be the fact that we have carried out to date 60 municipal, regional, really local government types of surveys, there are repeat municipalities in there, so that's not the same number of municipalities, and you'll see that in the next slide, but very, very strongly allied to unionized public sector organizations, including healthcare and education, as you can see up there on this particular slide. Having said that, to give you a glimpse into what the public sector looks like with regard Having said that, to give you a glimpse into what the public sector looks like with regard to local governments, you can see them arrayed there. These are all of the Ontario ones. We are very Ontario-centric in terms of our database, so it's very good from a comparative point of view. Most importantly, in an external comparison, you want to be completely, you know, using the metaphor, you want to be comparing apples to apples. So, the reality is, you have virtually, as your comparison, only two others that are outside of Ontario, you have municipalities in Ontario. Of course, they're different sizes, some of them are more rural-based, but you can see in there also, there's quite a number that are representative, the GTA is an example, and if you wanted an external benchmark relative to the GTA, it's strongly weighted in that direction. So, that's the database with which the external comparison will be made when you're looking at the city of Hamilton relative to other municipalities. Now, lying at the heart of the work that we're doing is a model, which we're not going to review here, but very important and central to the model is that we measure levels within the organization. We talked today about engaged employees, used to be motivated or satisfied employees, but engaged employees today. What's really important to talk about is what are they engaged with? And you want to have employees who are engaged with every one of those levels. You'll know automatically, when you look at those levels, that a person could be highly engaged in their job, but not engaged in their organization, or less engaged in their organization. What you really want is a person who's engaged with their job, the people who help them do their job, where their job and that team lies within a bigger part of the organization, which is essentially the division and the department that they are, as well as with the city as a whole as an employer. So, that was what was measured in your survey when it came to the engagement items. Now, Chris did review with you that there are four other survey elements that were foci of what was done inside the survey. This is the engagement piece, and importantly, when you see the results, you should be looking to understand job and work area in particular, not on its own, but just in particular, because that captures how people feel about the things that are closest to them in their day-to-day work at the city of Hamilton. And those, you can see, are overweight. There's 15 and 11 respectively for work area and job drivers, so that's 26 of the data points, if you want to call them that, that lie within the survey itself, and that's more than half of what was measured in the survey. So, it was weighted deliberately to capture the things that are in the essence associated what a person does on a day-to-day basis. Of course, there's some other things that are a little closer to them, 13 divisional drivers or items, four and five respectively for the department and organization, not because it's not important, but because those things are further away. It's like talking about your first cousin versus your partner. The first cousins aren't as important as your partner is, and your partner is the team that you're working with and what it is that you're doing on your day-to-day work. So, that's why the focus is the way it is in the survey, and importantly, when you see the results, keep that in mind with regard to when we're talking about engaged employees. We want them particularly to be more engaged with their job and their work area, which is normal, but still to be engaged also with those other elements that are in the survey. Having said that now, I want to set the scene for Laura's presentation, and importantly here, for you to understand some of the underlying dynamics of the survey itself. Now, you'll see across the middle, a, what is called a Likert scale, it runs from strongly disagree to strongly agree. What you do in an opinion-type survey is you present an item, and then you ask them on this particular scale whether they're strongly negative through to strongly positive with regard to that particular item and what it is that's asking. This is very normal, and you'll see under it that what we then do is give it a numerical value. This is how you turn an opinion into a number. And so, if you strongly disagree, you're given zero, the least value associated with the opinion, because it's the most negative about something that's positive in the workplace. So, you start with zero, and then with equal intervals, you go all the way up to strongly agree, and you'll see there's a six underneath strongly agree. So importantly here, folks, what's important to understand is when you ask people their opinions, and even if I was to ask you about the functioning of the council, you would have a range of opinion. You would be highly unlikely to get everybody to say strongly agree with regard to a positive element. You might get quite a number in the strongly agree and agree, but you would also have dissenting opinions, and so it's important to understand therefore, this isn't a report card similar to what we see in terms of As and Bs in a school record. This is very much about the opinions and, you know, normally, you will see some folks on the left hands of the scale who feel less positive, and as a result of that, the averages, generally speaking, are lower than 100%. You can get 100%s, but the only way to get it is to have everybody strongly agree, and off the top of my head, 4,500 people responded to the survey. You must understand that there's going to be some dissenting opinions, and therefore, the score's going to be lower than 100. Now importantly, what are the scores that you would expect? What are the ranges? What are the norms for what you'd expect when you look at the type of drivers that we measure in opinion surveys? And as you can see, we've done multiple surveys in the past, many of them in municipalities, and the norm for them is very similar to what you see here, which is starting around 50%. So, in other words, on a weighted average, the lowest normal driver has a value around about 50%, and this is things like usually workload manageability, recognition, you know, some issues with regard to their pay or their benefits. These tend to be the lower scored elements in a survey, so you should expect to see them in the 50 to 60 ranges, and you can see that on average therefore, they're sort of sitting in the middle of that Likert scale, you know, an average of people who are very positive versus those who are very negative, therefore, a score somewhat in the middle. Generally speaking, in most organizations, we see though, that they are more than that middle point with regard to how they feel about things such as, for instance, how they work together with their, the folks in their team, how they feel about, for instance, the way in which their processes and work processes work for them. And so importantly, the upper level is around 80%. Now, I want to do something with my hands. If this is the norms for an organization, as they are shown on that diagram up there, watch what happens to my hands as it describes what the city of Hamilton looks like. Shift to the right, right? The shift to the right means you have a higher low and a higher high across 4,500 people representing over 7,500 or 8,000 people. And so, as a first glimpse at the results, the city of Hamilton is sitting higher than our database norms on multiple drivers, and this is going to be demonstrated by Laura in a few moments. So importantly, recognize that there's a range of drivers, they capture various levels inside the organization, don't expect anything higher than roughly in the 80s, and therefore, as you can see here, the range has been set between 86 and 54. So, these averages are a method of trying to quickly and simply present to you the results. Of course, they do hide group differences, it's not that they, it's just the nature of arithmetic that we're talking about with regard to that. So, having said that, I'm going to hand over to Laura to review with you in depth the results, and of course, I'm going to be available if there are any questions at the end of her presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Yardley, much appreciated. And now, our Executive Director of our Human Resource Department, Laura Fontana, making us to the finish line, and then I take it, City Manager, you, John, and Laura will all be available, questions, comments, and answers. Laura, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a number of slides to go through, I'll try to get through them as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Just to take you through the overall score, so Chris had mentioned the five focus areas, and these are the overall scores that we have received from our survey results. So, again, specifically the overall engagement score, the cultural values, the support for diversity, health, safety, and wellness, we split into two, given the importance of our wellness initiatives and certainly the psychological levels and state that our organization is in, as well as ethics and integrity. Overall, the city results came in within the range of 68 to 80%, which indicates strong levels of engagement or agreement. I'm going to speak on these next few slides on each focus area, the first one being level of engagement. And this slide is actually split into two. We're going to be talking about our highest and lowest drivers internal to the organization. Again, the drivers are predictors of engagement and are measured at the organizational, departmental, divisional, and sectional levels within the organization, and as you can see, the top-scoring drivers are that the city employees are very clear on the purpose of their role within the organization and feel a high sense of commitment to their client or citizens that they serve, and that the support for diversity is very high in the workplace as well. They've indicated that they're proud to be city employees, and it's scored very highly on recommending the city as an employer, which would arguably be the ultimate indicator for overall engagement. This next slide speaks to the lower-scoring drivers, and certainly opportunities for us to improve going forward. Some of the areas include personal recognition, two-way communication, which is essentially between our leadership and our frontline staff at the divisional level, staffing resources, leadership approachability, and managing poor work performance, and we'll be talking a little bit more about poor work performance and how other organizations struggle with this at various levels, both public sector and private sector. It's important to also note that even, even our, with our bottom five ranked drivers, as indicated on the slide, there was nothing below 50%. Having said that, as you drill down through the organization, there are areas that are below 50%, and we'll certainly be looking at those in greater detail, but it's important to note that at the overall scores, they are not below that range, and there's a lot of scores between 60 and 73%, again, indicating strong levels of somewhat agree across the organization. Here, we're looking at the Metrics at Work overall database that includes approximately 85,000 responses for over 100 organizations in comparisons to our drivers at the city. So, it was important to do an apples-to-apples comparison, if you will, in terms of the drivers. So, in doing so, we needed to reduce the number of benchmark drivers so that we would have that comparison, and what we mean is that the data on the questions is relevant to the same questions within another organization at the same level. So, for example, managing poor work performance at the work level, so we needed to have that detailed understanding. The green bars, as you see on the slide, the city of Hamilton had seven benchmark scores that were 5% higher than the benchmark averages, and one red bar indicating a benchmark score that was below the benchmark average. Those in black were everything in between, and essentially within plus or minus 5% of the benchmark scores. So, as you can see, our lowest scores and the only red score is with personal recognition, and this was in also the bottom 10 internal benchmark scores, and it's clearly an area that we can need to focus on and drill down as we look further into these details. But having said that, 62% scored for personal recognition, which is really still on the positive end of the scores, but certainly room for improvement, and we will look at that in greater detail. So, just looking at managing poor performance for a moment, when we were viewing that against the external database provided by Metrics at Work, we see that the city of Hamilton scored 1.5% above the database average, which suggests that this is a challenging area for most organizations, and while we were higher than the benchmark, that's not to say that there's still room for improvement, and certainly an area that we need to focus on a go-forward basis. The municipal benchmarks, so this slide represents our scores against a municipal database only, which is what John was referring to earlier, and in this case, there are fewer organizations, and there are only 16 benchmark questions. Again, based on the design of our survey and reflective of our organization, the Metrics at Work had 16 available database questions and when looking at their total database levels. So, when compared to those ranked drivers, satisfaction with resources and supplies was our lowest-ranked driver. Again, in looking at managing poor work performance, comparing to the database for municipalities, remembering that we were 1.5% higher of the overall database when looking at municipalities more specifically, the city was 4.4% above the benchmark, further validating that this remains an issue, and although it's not all bad news, it's certainly something that we need to focus on as we move forward. So, there were a number of themed comments, themed questions that, open-ended questions that individuals were provided an opportunity to respond to, and there were two areas that we wanted to measure, the first one being our greatest strength at the city, and we asked, what do you like most about working at the city? And then conversely, we were measuring what was in most need of improvement, and we asked what, tell us what we could improve upon. So, when looking at these results, we had almost 3,400 surveys returned with positive comments. Of these comments, there were approximately 6,700 themes emerging that were categorized into 134 subcategories. So, one single written comment by an individual could have been themed in different ways. So, for example, if someone was talking about their pay and benefits and their pleasure in working with their coworkers, then that comment was split into three themes. You're looking here at the top 10 ranked themes in terms of the positive responses through our open-ended questions, and as you can see, pay and general positivity about serving the public and the citizens scored quite highly, as well as employees also ranked working with their coworkers very positively. So, some real good results in terms of the written comments provided by our employees. And then conversely, how could we have, how can we improve and do things better going forward? We received just over 3,300 comments from employees on how we can improve things, and from there, we gathered approximately 6,000 themes that were categorized into 116 subcategories. Again, some areas for improvement is the top-down communication, primarily between management and frontline staff. Staffing resources, workload issues, and training opportunities were also areas that are identified for needing improvement. And then, another common theme throughout the survey was our consistent applications of our policies and our procedures, so that's an area also that was validated in our other engagement scores. Finally, we received some feedback regarding leadership and related competencies. The second focus area was culture, so again, how are we living our culture values across the organization? And because this was a custom section of the report, we really don't have any benchmarks to essentially rank against. So, we asked the employees how they felt the values that they lived at the team or job level compared, as well as at the organization level, and as you can see here, to the extent to which people felt that people in their work areas usually behave in ways that demonstrate our five cultural pillars, and similarly at the organization level, the extent to which employees felt that the organization does a good job of creating and supporting work environments where employees can demonstrate the five cultural pillars. Relatively good scores overall, and not surprisingly that the scores were better at the work area and team, and further to John's point, those are the folks that you align most closely with, and you're going to have a better connection with overall. Workplace Ethics and Integrity, again, is the third focus area, and as a reminder, this was asking employees how we abide by our Code of Conduct, and if people, employees feel comfortable in reporting any violations. As you can see here, the employees generally agree that their supervisor demonstrates high ethical standards in accordance with the Code of Conduct. Some lower scores in terms of consistency, again, with our policies and our procedures and practices, as well as some comfort in raising issues with divisional leaders. We obviously have to do a bit of further exploration into these areas, particularly as we cascade the survey throughout the organization, but generally speaking, pretty good results with respect to this focus area. Health, Safety, and Wellness, again, we split this into two areas, the physical safety and the psychological safety of our employees in the workplace. The physical safety, again, pretty high scores in terms of indicating that the majority of employees feel relatively safe within the workplace, and this is particularly meaningful given the physical nature of many of the jobs that many of our employees do within the organization. Certainly something we need to maintain and improve upon, but we were pleased with the results with the physical safety of our employees. This section measured the psychological wellness of our employees. Again, we adopted the questions from the Mental Health Commission of Canada, Working Minds questionnaire, so there was some consistency with our training initiatives throughout the organization, and for example, employees were just asked about identifying if they've ever been subject to negative behaviors in the workplace, for example... to negative behaviors in the workplace, for example, yelling and bullying, being insulted, rumors, and those types of areas. We were particularly interested in chronic areas, for example, matters that happened on a regular basis, daily basis, weekly basis, those were of particular concern to us. So it's encouraging that we note an overall score of 80% and that most employees feel strongly that their supervisors would be supportive in dealing with personal issues and that inappropriate behaviors within our workplace is not tolerated. But we also recognize that there's some areas, for example, in our workload distribution particularly, is taking a toll on some of employees, so we need to be mindful of that and incorporate our strategies going forward. The second component of the psychological wellness, we measured harassment at three different levels within the organization, between coworkers, or what we refer to as lateral harassment or bully coworker, by boss, which is referred to as downward harassment or bully boss, and then by client, which is referred to as external harassment or by bully client. And it's important to note in this slide and the next two slides that these are just self-reported data, so it's not necessarily reflective of formal complaints that we've received through various avenues, but it's the perception of employees on their level of harassment. So as you can see, there are low levels of bullying by coworker, which is good and it's better than the Metrics at Work benchmark data. But having said that, there were 219 employees that reported weekly and 157 reported daily harassment behaviors from their coworkers. So that's obviously a concern, and as we look deeper into the organization, there are areas that we need to delve into and see where things are happening. So at no point should we be tolerating any level of harassing behaviors within the organization. So certainly areas that we can delve into going forward. The next slide is with respect to the downward harassment I refer to or the bully boss. And again, we see here even lower levels proportions of downward harassment, which is also stronger than the Metrics at Work database. So again, good news, but having said that, there were 118 employees, as you can see, who reported weekly and 94 employees who reported daily harassing behaviors from their boss. There are likely problematic areas, as I mentioned earlier, that we need to focus on and delve into. So as we move forward and we cascade these results throughout the organization, we are certainly going to drill down into these areas so that we can see what exactly is going on. This last slide is with respect to the external harassment or the bully client. And here's where the data changes somewhat, and it's respect to harassment that our employees receive from their clients out in the workforce. And this is particularly concerning because we have a number of citizen-facing services in our organization and a number of employees that work in the frontline that are citizen facings. And staff reported higher instances of external harassment in terms of their dealing with the public. And also, our data is of a negative variance as compared to the data from Metrics at Work. So it's concerning to us for sure, particularly given the large number of city employees that provide these citizen-facing services. And again, we want to drill down and look further and see what strategies we can incorporate because at no point in time should we be putting up with that sort of behavior. We also decided to collect a bunch of demographic census and census information from our workforce. It was important for us to understand the composition of our workforce as we move forward and we develop our policies and our programs, and we want to enhance our supportive and inclusive programs as well. So we asked for a number of information in terms of, as I mentioned, understanding the composition of our workforce, which will eventually lead to inputs and insights with respect to our policy and program development. We want to enhance our inclusive and supportive workplace at some point in time, and eventually we want to be an organization that's reflective of the community that we serve. There were a number of areas that we asked for information in terms of personal information, including age, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, visible minority, indigenous and Aboriginal status, citizenship to Canada, religion, and disability, accommodation needs, dependent care, commuting time to work. And these terms and definitions provided in the survey were adopted by the federal government census. And again, it's important to note that the respondents and the disclosures were completely voluntary and not necessarily a true reflection of the workforce. The final question was with respect to the city's diversity, and there were two questions asked. "I feel people of diverse backgrounds are treated with respect within my work area, and I feel members of diverse groups have equal opportunities in my division." And these responses provided some of our strongest scores within the organization, and this is quite pleasing to see, particularly from an HR perspective. The scores were 81.3 and 79.4 respectively. So while it's good news and we're going to continue with our good work, there's still much to be done in terms of our training, our education, and our policy and program development. But we're hoping that this is somewhat reflective of the strategies flowing from our diversity and inclusion strategy that we introduced in 2016. So certainly good news and stuff that we want to enhance as we move forward. We do have a lot of data that we collected, particularly the demographic and the census data. And at this point, it's simply data without analysis. So we need to turn our minds to understanding it better, understanding the composition of our workforce, and then better understanding the challenges as we move forward and do a bunch of program development and policy and procedure enhancement. We're going to create action plans that will be integrated into these programs so eventually we can better serve our organization. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Chris and we'll speak to the next steps.
Thank you very much, Laura. And back to our city manager for a wrap-up and summary of actions moving forward.
We're just about there. So our next steps are, as you see, so after this meeting, we'll be now cascading the results down to our middle management, which will then be further cascaded down to our frontline. So you can see the time periods that we have, February to March and March to April. And of course, as we're working with our frontline and our management team, there will be action planning. So what we hear and what we're going to do about it is what we're going to be looking at from the April to August period. And then, of course, based on that, our implementation strategy in terms of specific actions and monitoring over that September 2018 to September 2020, all the actions will be undertaken and then we'll monitor to see whether or not we're getting the results that we're hoping. And then, of course, we'll resurvey back in September of 2020, which of course then we'll, you know, we'll be able to benchmark against ourselves the next time when we resurvey. So it's really important for you to know that our senior leadership team obviously has taken this incredibly seriously. And in fact, this is in their performance accountability document. So not just doing the survey, but following up, taking action. So S L T and as well as our directors and our managers, all of this is fundamental to how we oversee and, you know, help to manage the organization. So we had a little bit of fun. We had said to our staff that if we were to hit a certain target, that they could challenge S L T to anything that, you know, was legal. And so we did, in fact, hit our target. In fact, if they had hit 75%, I was going to jump into Hamilton Harbor, which it was, I know, next time around.
Famous people have been there before.
You know, but you know, I was blown away how complicated that got, you know. But anyways, I was supposed to have a public health nurse and several other things in order for me to, you know, go take a jump in the lake. But we didn't hit 75, too bad, but we did receive a challenge from our organization. So if this works, hopefully it does. Oh, sorry, I need some help here. Ah, that's just too easy.
If you want to see S L T swap places with a frontline staff member for a day, let me hear you.
There we go. Oh, just a sec.
Hi, Chris Murray, city manager.
Can we start this again?
Just want to thank everyone for taking the time to fill out the people survey. The results were impressive. 65% of you took the time. And as...
Perfect.
There's an echo. Just a sec.
Just want to thank everyone for taking the time to fill out the results. The results were impressive. 65% of you took the time. And as a result of that, the senior leadership team took a challenge.
If we don't get on the third try like baseball...
Jack lean to the rescue, please.
If you want to see S L T swap places with a frontline staff member for a day, let me hear you.
Perfect.
Hi, Chris Murray, city manager. Just want to thank everyone for taking the time to fill out the people survey. The results were impressive. 65% of you took the time. And as a result of that, the senior leadership team took a challenge. And so today, I'm here with John at the sewage treatment facility. We're cleaning out some raw sewage lines to make sure they keep flowing for the City of Hamilton 365 days of the year. Great challenge and look forward to getting back to everyone with the survey results and with the action plan so we can address some of the challenges you identified for us. Now we're going to see what some of the other general managers doing.
Where we're standing right now is we are in the kitchen of McCasa Lodge upon the mountains. And what we're doing here this morning is we're preparing meals for the residents here at the lodge. There's a really genuine and personal commitment that I think people have here in order to do this kind of work. I think it can be heart-wrenching sometimes as well. There's a lot of relationships that can form between the staff and the residents here to really take good care of the people that are here. It's been really, really refreshing for me. I think it's very easy for senior management to become so distracted with their work that they become disconnected to the frontline. And really, that's what we're all about here, is the frontline and the services that we deliver. We need to hear from them in order to make this a better organization, to serve the residents better, to improve our culture, and really just to do our jobs well.
So I'm here today as part of the S L T challenge, and I chose forestry to come out and see how the guys are doing their work. I'm in an office all the time, and this was really an opportunity for me to come outdoors and see how the outside workers do their job. I was so impressed with their health and safety and how diligent they were in making sure that all of them were working in a very safe environment. So, you know, when you look at the work they're doing, you really don't appreciate how involved it is and how much work there is in terms of making sure that the actual work is done properly and done safely. Hopefully, we all really do have an appreciation for the great work that these guys do on a daily basis.
I chose to spend the day with risk management staff to have a better appreciation on how they serve not only our citizens in terms of preserving our assets, our buildings, our vehicles, but a better appreciation on how they do their work. It was a great day shadowing Dominic, better appreciation of how Dominic works with our vendors, in the case of our mechanics in garages, ensuring that our vehicles are repaired safely, put back into service. So I have a much better appreciation for the focus of our staff, not only on the actual vehicles, but ensuring that the safety of our staff is a compromise. It was a great day. It was a great day, A, to get out of the office, and B, Dominic's done a great job in allowing me to have a better appreciation for the work that our risk management staff performed. I'm Paul Johnson. I'm the new general manager of the Healthy and Safe Communities Department. And this morning, we're here at the fabulous Red Hill Family Center, helping kids get a healthy start to the day with breakfast. And couldn't have been more fun than cooking in the kitchen and serving food. I mean, the greeting you get from Mark and May in the kitchen, their knowledge of how to cook, taking me through everything. I mean, that's the kind of energy and enthusiasm that's always at the center here. They welcome the kids with open arms, they welcome visitors with open arms, the families with open arms. It's just been a fun morning. All the members of the senior leadership team need to thank the employees of the organization for the great response rate to the Our People survey. The only way we can work together to get better is to make sure we've got lots of good responses. So I want to thank everybody for taking the time and participating. And this is something we should always be doing, coming out and seeing what happens in all the great programs that we run and that we support the community through. And one of the really important ones is things like childcare. The provision of childcare fits right into the vision of the City of Hamilton. We want to be the best place to raise a child and age successfully. What better place to illustrate that than the Red Hill Family Center?
We're here at Station 30 on Victoria. One of the things with this challenge that's been really great is to get to go out with people who are actually doing their work on the ground and interview people every day. And so with working with Sean just now, looking at the ambulance, going through it, all the supplies, looking at just the physical space and the kind of quarters that they work in, and the kind of cleaning and things they need to do, what they find, what they're going through. And one of the things that we all do that are that really important work that nobody really sees, that is important to our services, whether it's paramedic services and others, but they couldn't do it without that really important work behind the scenes. Coming out and doing this sort of thing is really essential to understand the feedback that we're getting through the Our People survey. You can't really understand people and their circumstances, their perspectives, unless you're out there and see the work that's going on and talk with them and understand it. And so it was a great challenge that was raised for us, and it's a great opportunity for all of us. And we really need to remember, we shouldn't just be doing this today, we need to be doing this on a regular basis. It's a great reminder for all of us that to truly understand the work environments that our people work in and the environments that our clients face and our community faces, we need to be out there.
I'm up here at Animal Services. I think in our department, we have a very diverse group. We do a lot of services for the public to cover...
Lucky Jason.
...what some of those things are, what some of the staff face on a daily basis. I think the staff appears to be very kind to me in only having to deal with very friendly kittens and dogs. I spent part of the morning at White Kern. I was, I guess, an interpreter for the day, although I'm not sure how much interpretation I did. I kind of tagged along to the people who know what they're doing. It is such a big department that it's hard to always know what's going on, what people are thinking, how we, some of the leaders in the organization, can be helping staff do the work that they need to do. So it's just a great way to really get a sense of what's important, how we're doing as a city, what things we can be doing better. And I'm looking forward to seeing what some of the staff have to say, that we know how hard staff work, how dedicated they are, the passion they bring to their work. And it's great to kind of get to see that people in the places where they work every day, the great work that they do for the City of Hamilton, and have some fun.
So we're at Sockville Senior Center. What I'm doing today is I'm sort of shadowing different staff and trying to gain a better understanding of what the staff do here at Sockville. That was putting up a volleyball net, which you would think would be relatively easy, but I struggled a little bit. It's always good to have a reminder of what the frontline staff do because without them we wouldn't be anything. And so having that opportunity to touch base and revisit and understand what they're doing just increases your appreciation of the fact that they're the real contributors, they're the real employees that need the accolades and the recognition because they're doing this every single day. So it was very impressive. I really believe that they have the best ideas, they are in their work every single day, and they have great solutions for doing things. So I'm always interested in what the staff have to say. Really looking forward to seeing the results and hoping that it's going to provide us with some guidance so that we can improve as we move forward to support them. Thank you so much for participating in the survey. Without your input, you really assist us to know what direction we should be going in. So I really appreciate everyone who took the time to complete the survey, and I know the information will be very helpful.
So just want to thank everyone for watching the video today. Thank members of the senior leadership team for taking the challenge. Thank John for giving a tour of the plant and John for showing us this operations center. So once again, thank you very much.
The next slide says questions, so let's just go. Just before we turn the floor over to you, S L T has decided to develop a new policy in that anytime we present to you, we're going to all each have a puppy. So with that... Yeah, I know, I know. So anyways, the floor is yours. Appreciate you giving us as much time as you have, so.
Outstanding presentation. I've never seen a finer video out of the corporation and management.
Oh, it's...
Well done. Questions, comments interspersed. We have no action items, so I'll start with our mayor. Mayor Eisenberger, please.
Thank you. And thank you, Chris, and the entire team and the consultant for the great work on the survey. You know what, it's really a demonstration of the positive outreach that we're doing. I think very, very important for our organization. And certainly, the senior staff going out and doing a day in the life of our, you know, our employees out there on the frontline, really, really important to do. So congratulations for that, much appreciated. And it's something that I... And it's something that I know members of council have done from time to time and I think we, we should encourage that on an ongoing basis, not on an occasional basis. Because it really gives us an eye to what happens on the ground and what they need to do on a day-to-day basis to make the city work. So, much appreciated. Wonderful stats. Obviously, overall positive. So my, my focus will obviously go to the negative. And the negative was that I saw was the page 33, 34, and 35, which has really kind of highlighted the harassment and bullying issue. And I, what I didn't see up there was a comparator. So I don't know if there is a comparator and not, not that it makes any of that right, but, you know, an understanding of how that stacks up against other municipalities. I don't know if that was covered in the, kind of the beginning stats. Do we have any information on that? First question. Because obviously, it's, those are, they're always concerning numbers, no matter whether it's one or 21 or 201, it doesn't really matter. So, you know, what, what information do we have that compares us to others and, and what kind of actions are we contemplating that would help address some of those issues?
So if I can through you, Deputy Mayor, the, what you see on the, on the right-hand side of this slide, in green, you see city of Hamilton, 87% responded that from a harassment standpoint. How often do they experience it? So the never or once or twice was the, was the response. So 87 is a very good score. The database, the DB right underneath it, for municipalities on this particular topic is 85.7. In other words, from a staff-to-staff perspective, we're, we're better than other municipalities. You know, obviously, there should be zero tolerance. We should not, you know, no one should be bullying a coworker, which is what this slide speaks to. And if you go down to the bottom of here, bullying that's occurring on a, a once a week or daily basis, you know, it's 8.2 for the city. The database of municipalities is 10.2. So in fact, it's worse than other municipalities. And, and I always hesitate to say, you know, anything positive about that because it's obvious. From a boss to staff or boss to frontline worker, it's actually better than the, the staff to staff. In other words, you know, it, it is never or once or twice in the time that the person is working. You see our score is 91.9. The database is 91.8. So it's roughly the same. I mean, other municipalities, from a boss to frontline worker, it's, it's a rare occurrence is basically what we're, what we're finding. And when you look at the very end of this document or this, this graph here, you see that we're 4.7, whereas the database is 5.3, which is, you might argue, is, is almost the same. But again, you know, we're from a boss to frontline staff, from a staff to staff, we have a bit of work to do. But what is more telling, I think, is from a, a client or a citizen standpoint to our workers, this is where it starts to jump a bit here in Hamilton compared to other municipalities. So in terms of almost never or never or once or twice, our score is 70%. The database of municipalities is 76.8. And then on the more frequent occurrence, you see we're at 20.3, whereas the database is 14.2. I can't explain why that is, but I can say this much, you know, we provide 72 different services in this organization and we have a lot of citizen-facing services. And it was just by chance yesterday, I was out with Lionel, who is a parking bylaw enforcer. And Lionel's been with us for 16 years. And Lionel is very good at his job in the sense of he knows how to, he's, his social skills, his emotional skills are very, very, and you've got to have great skills to do that work, I'm just telling you. But the first thing he said to me was that, you know, a good day for him is not being yelled at. Okay? And so, I mean, my comment to him was, you know, we, we work with 7,800 employees and I'm sure 7,700 and change would never expect to come to work and be yelled at, you know, or somewhere around that number. But a good day for him is not to be yelled at. And, and I saw him when he was issuing tickets and people coming, you know, it's amazing how just respect is such a two-way street. Because when people approached him in a respectful manner, you know, he is one of our greatest ambassadors. His response back was to give them a chance to correct the situation. And I, you know, I only spent an hour, hour and a half with them. But you imagine getting up every day, having to do that job? Or if you happen to be one of our, one of our city workers that's filling potholes right now, notwithstanding what happened in the past and just, you know, the comments that people make? And I get it. I get how, you know, whether you're an ambulance or a paramedic or you're, you know, you're, you're at a counter, we have a whole bunch of services where people get angry or frustrated with us. And I think, you know, and they express it. This, this is something that I think we have to find ways to support our staff and, you know, and communicating. And I've seen it in other municipalities where they have zero harassment tolerance, you know, signs and other things that they do to help people. So I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. This is, of all the slides, these are the ones that jump.
So I appreciate that. And so I, so can we expect then some, some follow-up strategy in how we're going to support our staff?
Absolutely.
Especially, you know, on the bullying side, clearly, you know, zero, zero tolerance is where we are. That doesn't mean it doesn't happen, but we, we don't tolerate it and, and we respond accordingly. So there's, we're, we're going to see some strategies to help, you know, all of those categories, especially the, kind of the frontline staff that are out there working with community that get, you know, their unfair share of abuse.
That's right.
So can we expect that, you know, somewhere down the road?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then the one, one issue that, that Laura kind of mentioned in passing was the, kind of the census data issue and how all of this breaks down. And I would think that, you know, to get even more granular about this, we, we really need to know, you know, how long have the employees been here? What's their age category? Are they a millennial? Are they a baby boomer? You know, how does that break down and to more, you know, accurately reflect where they are in the, kind of the employment paradigm and how that then translates into, you know, the psychological wellness and everything that we see up there? So I know we haven't got it this time. Is it the intent next time to have that level of data available? That kind of breakdown, which would make it even more enlightening, in fact?
Yeah. I mean, through Deputy Mayor, I think the short answer is yes, but I know Laura just wants to add a little bit to that, if you don't mind.
Laura?
So through the chair, we, we endeavor to get all the information and it's absolutely great information to get, recognizing that it was provided on a voluntary basis. But we need to understand the composition of our workforce and then react accordingly. So at this point in time, there's so much information and we got it on all levels. So absolutely, there's a breakdown of the age groups and, and we do have a good representation in the various, the four, the four major areas. But we need some time to, to digest it, understand it, and then, and then respond to it and see what, what programs and policies, et cetera, we need to implement in accordance with our, our challenges. We're doing other things in terms of diversity and inclusion. Again, trying to understand the composition of our workforce. If it's reflective of our community, it likely isn't. But we need to put in efforts and programs that will highlight those areas and, and target certain, certain groups that we can do better in.
Thank you, Laura. So, so, so through the course of this survey, you collected this data or this is data you already have?
Through the chair, through the, the survey, we collected the data.
Okay, that's great. So, so knowing that, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity to mine that and, and, you know, come back with, you know, some, some more granular detail because data is everything these days. And, you know, it can tell us a lot about where people are in the, the overall organization, whether at the tail end of their career or at the beginning and, or in the middle. So, so I, I really appreciate that. I think that's going to be very, very useful information. Beyond that, you know, in my view, this is a great report and certainly a, a great testament to our level of concern and care for our employees that we're actually doing this on an annualized basis. I'm, I'm assuming that's an annualized basis.
Every three years.
Every three, sorry about that. Which is, you know, obviously clearly an important effort to take. And, and then the steps that we can take in between those interim years as to, you know, some of the resolves around some of the challenges that we face. But it, it really does speak to some great senior management work, even though Dan McKinnon was rocking the, the hairnet. I'm not sure why anybody else was.
Everyone can do that.
Yeah, if you have less hair, you get a hairnet. I don't know. And, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing you jump in the lake every once in a while, but that's, that's a whole other issue. If you do it now, you won't go down.
That's true.
It's nice, you can jump on the ice. Technical issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Beyond that, thank you all for this great work. It's really important and I know it's going to serve us well. And with, with the extra amount of data that we can mine out of this, it, we're going to be well-served for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for leading us off. Next on my speaker's list, I have Counselor Skelly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And very briefly, great presentation. Did, first question, did Cindy Chordas shoot that? Was that a?
Of course.
I think that position in house is amazing. She does, she's a very, very good videographer and it, obviously it shows. And just a quick comment, I think maybe in the future, when you do this, I'd love to be invited to maybe also take part in.
Oh, great.
Senior management team, perhaps other counselors too would like to work with, I think spending a day with some of our online staff would, frontline staff would be fabulous.
Oh, that's great.
If you do it again, I'd love to participate.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Skelly. Much appreciated. Counselor Ferguson, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chris, I listened to you say you got, almost had to jump into a lake. I actually had a, a video sent to me. I don't know what the members of council got a couple days ago. And I'm not sure whether it was a city manager or employer or citizen, but he had to jump in a pothole and it went up to his neck. Other cities are enjoying the same things we are. I guess, you know, the, the, the diversity was interesting, taking a look at this. It's interesting, almost 60% of our employees are female. And I come out of the construction industry, which was very male-dominated. And we do a lot of that heavy work too, whether it's forestry or in the sewage treatment plant or filling potholes. So it's interesting that 60% of our employees are female, which shows that we're, we're diverse. And secondly, that 18% are immigrants. So, you know, it's said that most immigrants migrate to Toronto. We're obviously getting our share too because they were born in another country and immigrated to Canada within the last five years. So that's really interesting to see. You know, we got the same thing in police. We're the second most diverse police force in the country, measured using census data, using the number of diverse officers we have versus the population. We're very close to the same.
That's good.
And I know one of the things we try to do, we hire police officers, is, I hope I'm not letting anything out of school, but we look for second languages, not just in French, but in some 40, 50 other languages around the world.
Portuguese and everything else.
Make it easier for people when we have to communicate with them. It's good work and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ferguson. Next on my list, Counselor Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor and certainly Chris and everyone who is involved in this and in staff, all the staff that took part in the, in the survey. Excellent job. And, you know, I appreciate, Chris, you, you mentioned that, you know, you can't explain some of the rationale for the percentages. And that's great. It's not, and I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, it's, it's a moving document.
Exactly.
And as you get, as you dissect it and get to understand it more, being out in the field and taking that opportunity more and more and all of SLT doing that, it would, I think those numbers will get clearer and there'll be a clearer understanding. So I appreciate that. I think we've come a long way from many years ago and certainly appreciate everything to hear today. And I appreciate the comment of, you know, seeing what staff deal with in, in the yelling and the, you know, the abuse that can go on out in the public. I think all of us around this table experienced that. I just did this morning, as a matter of fact, with regards to potholes. So I won't go into it. But it's frustrating and, you know, I think the perception of the public out there is it doesn't matter that it's winter and it doesn't matter that we can't get stuff. Why isn't it done? And it, and it is difficult. And I commend staff every day for having to be out there. I saw my guys out there yesterday in Stony Creek going around the ward and certainly doing everything they can. And I'm, I always commend them. They do a tremendous job and especially in some adverse situations. With regards to colleagues around the table, I agree. Take the opportunity to go out and see what they deal with on a daily basis. I went out a few years ago on a snowplow and it was a nice day, but there were five-foot piles of snow on the edges of roadways. It was also a garbage day. You know, you don't see things when you drive in the car and you go, well, you know what, out of sight, out of mind. You don't understand. When the resident calls me and says their garbage wasn't picked up and I say, well, where was it now? Because now I realize, you put it on the five-foot tall pile of snow, well, it's a safety issue. And they can't pick it up there. It becomes an issue. So residents have to understand where things are at. And again, when we see what snowpiles or any services out there have to deal with, I commend them all. Chris, you know what I'm going to say next is terrific video. How do we get this out to the public? They need to understand. I had an email yesterday from a resident with regards to our clean air policy that we did in, what, 2015? And why haven't we, why haven't we initiated anything yet? Well, I sent it to Brian Montgomery in the Health Department and, I mean, he did a huge long status of the, we've done this and we're doing this and we're doing this. The public don't know. And how do we get it out there? And I know if it's not something dear to their heart, they don't care.
Right.
But they need to know that we are doing more than just filling potholes and picking up garbage and clearing snow. So for what it's worth, can we maybe work with the media and see if they can put this video on Cable 14 or, or something? Even Channel 11 has a little section where they have little video things that.
So if I can through the Deputy Mayor, as I, I've kind of resisted talking to the media until I had a chance to get in front of you so I could answer your questions first. But once we're, you know, once this meeting is over, then I'm, I'm able to communicate more directly. So this video that you just seen is, is obviously going to be shared, has been shared and will continue to be shared with not only our organization. It'll be made available on our website, but I will make a point of, you know, whether it's Channel 14 or whoever, either they ask us or we, I'll volunteer, we'll make sure that, you know, people, you know, learn about this, the results here and see that kind of video. And, I mean, I have to applaud Sandra Walker too for.
I was just going to say, I just got an email today.
Yeah. And Sandra's, you know, she's dead right in, in supporting, you know, the union, you know, 5167 deserves its credit. And those videos that she's been generating, you know, we're huge supporters of that. Those are our people too. And she's done a great job of, you know, making our community, some of those videos play at the, at the theater just across the street here. So before people watch their movie, they get to see something about us. So, yeah, we're being proactive and, but yours is a great comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Couldn't agree more, Counselor Pearson. Great suggestion. Counselor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And, you know, I, so I have to ask, how did everyone get assigned to their areas? Did you draw straws? I'm still trying to figure out how Jason ended up up at the animal.
We didn't even talk to each other. I mean, and of course, when we all, when we saw Cindy knit the whole thing together and edit it and we looked at it, you know, we were all emailing Jason, you know, who completely outdid us with the puppies, you know, good strategy. And, you know, and then, but obviously, no, this was not scripted. This was just each, each leader chose whatever they wanted, so.
No, and, and thank you for that. What I, what I particularly liked about that video, there were many things, what I particularly liked is that everyone got to experience the diversity of our, of our corporation and the many different departments that we have. Counselors around this table can go at any time, just, you know, phone the director and, and make arrangements and you can spend a day, you can spend half a day. Many of us around this table have done it. So, you know, you don't have to wait for an invitation.
It means everything.
It really does.
I'm telling you, our staff, I mean, you know, it's unfortunate that they're shocked when the city manager shows up. And, you know, I'm like them. I view them like my neighbors. I mean, I, yeah, I have a title, but let's not get too excited about that. For their elected official to come and, you know, and spend a bit of time, that resonates. That goes through the organization like wildfire, fire, and you have no idea how important that is.
Well, and I appreciate that. And Deputy Mayor, I have to, you know, digress for just a moment, but I spent time up at the traffic department. You know, certainly, the traffic is a big issue in Water Down, and we have many signs flying out the door. And I spent some time up there, and I thoroughly, thoroughly had a different perspective. But it was so great to meet everyone that's involved in the, you know, feet on the ground, working on things. The one area that I do have some questions on, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is communication. And Chris, you and I have spoken about this before. I've owned a communication company in the past, and it is, you know, it's just at the basis of every successful organization. And I noticed on page 19 to 21 that there are some challenges around communication. I believe 21 is actually where, near the bottom. I've got it, 21 here. So, departac... And it's not, it's not huge. It's not a big difference. But still, it's such an important area. And I'm just wondering, what are your thoughts on next steps to address that issue?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, this is the best part of the whole process. We get a chance now to take these results and communicate them to our frontline and ask them, what is it that we're not doing that we need to be doing? I mean, I get, I get comments all the time about videos that I send out to staff, and so they, I always get strong, strong, positive recognition. So that's one. But there's many, many ways you can communicate effectively with frontline staff. And so I think we'll see what they tell us. But I think what they're telling us is they expect more than just the city manager doing things. They expect their general manager, their director, their manager. So we're going to find out from them exactly what they want from us. And then we'll be implementing those kinds of changes.
Thank you. And I look forward to hearing that feedback and just what our next steps are. Timing around that, Chris?
We're rolling this, the communication of this is starting this afternoon to our managers. Over the next few weeks, a few months, we'll be right down to the frontline. Here are the results. And then what do you make of these results? What is it specifically we got to do in this little section within this division of this part of our... So what is it specifically? Because the results may be, you know, a little bit eye-opening. And if it's communication, then our question then is, okay, if it's not good, how do we fix it? And, you know, we've embarked on continuous improvement right across this entire organization. This year's budget was all about metrics and evidence that, you know, we're trying to spend your money wisely. This whole process is a continuous improvement process. This is all about taking the results to our frontline and saying, "How do we fix this?" Because next time we survey this, we expect the chart, the line to go like this. We don't want to be flat, and surely to God, we don't want to be worse. So it's incumbent upon us, and this is what was not done well the last time we did a corporate survey in 2006. So we'll come back. We are, and I know Laura, I can just feel it, she's saying to me, "We're going to be regularly reporting to council our progress on this," and which is something that HR will endeavor to do on behalf of our organization. So you'll get feedback on those things that we're hearing from our staff and the actions that we're taking. So, you know, it won't be as long a presentation as this, but you'll know where we're going and what we're doing.
Well, I think just the, Mr. Deputy Mayor, just the results that are in front of us being presented show that we have really put a focus on our organization and an internal focus, which I think we needed to do. And we talked about that, you know, certainly for the eight years that I've been here. We've really put a focus on it in the last five years. And lastly, the only other comment I have is some thoughts maybe on, I don't want to say job sharing, but I want to say cross-pollination, almost, within the organization of not just our senior management team, but also for folks that are working on the front lines to, you know, get a taste of a half a day working in another department, something completely different than what they're doing, for our own employees to really recognize the diversity of our organization and just how many different roles and responsibilities are. You know, anything from putting mashed potatoes in a, you know, up at McCassel Lodge to being in Public Works and doing the trees, you know, which we have a lot of tree happening in our survey right now. So I can really appreciate what the workers go through. But what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, I know when I joined the organization in 1995, I had hoped I would be seen to be valuable enough that I could work across the organization and chase great work. And I'm no different than any of them. There's, in fact, whenever we do employee orientation, I always talk in terms of their career here. And hopefully, they feel like, you know, experiencing different opportunities within the organization. I know, I can certainly speak in Dan's shop, when he was in Water, Waste Water, and what he's doing in the department there. You know, there's, he's creating those opportunities for people to, you know, maybe test drive something that whether or not they want to do it for the rest of their life, it's a whole other thing. But giving them different experiences. And I know Paul, just in the way that, you know, he has, you know, run other things, you know, there's always that opportunity to give people, you know, chances to sample other types of work. So, I mean, those are just, you know, but I know as a senior leadership team, you want to keep an organization vital. You want to keep them kind of evolving, you know, give them great experience, give them great, you know, push them out of their comfort zone, let them see how it goes, and know that there's a net there to support them if it doesn't go well.
And, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and lastly, I do want to recognize local 5167 and Sandra Walker. You know, again, I think we have, as an organization, thanks to Laura and her team and many, many others across all departments, I think we've come a long way in, you know, a better working relationship, and which has resulted in, you know, the good feedback reflecting that the environment is more positive than it is negative. So I very much appreciate everyone's work up there. Thank you so much. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Well said. Counselor Partridge, thank you. Counselor Conley, please.
Thank you. Just 21.8, does that represent the management that we're checked, or just non-union? I just don't understand that.
Uh, okay.
Managers and superintendents?
Yeah, so that, so that 21.8, so we had 4,800 people fill out the survey. 21.8 are in manager and non-union. The ballots are all unionized.
Because you can be non-union, not management, so.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I'm asking...
Yeah, no, no, no.
Management, was that represent...
Well, okay, so the 21.8, I think, are non-union, meaning they're not necessarily management.
Management.
Correct.
So we don't know how many management people took part in this survey?
Oh, we can drill, yeah, we do. We absolutely, we have, the data is set up in such a way that we can analyze it down to those kinds of questions.
Interesting to know. And I think, I hope it's a high number, because
Oh, yeah.
They're a little more important to the organization in that they, their attitude goes down and up to other people. So I hope it was a large number that did take part. And that's all I'll say about that.
Be shocked if it wasn't.
And most surveys have a plus or minus, like accuracy. Is this kind of, is there any plus or minuses that you would say this survey represents?
John, please.
Yes, through the chair. Let me say that what you're talking about is normal and particularly scientific types of articles. It's not very normal in public opinion. On the basis of the fact that the sampling that we have here is an accidental sample, it is not a representative sample. And as a result of that, setting parameters in terms of the confidence intervals that you would have, for instance, with a mean, is almost impossible to make a clear indication of. But you can create confidence intervals. What it does is it adds to the mean two more data points. And therefore, instead of seeing 48 scores, you see 48 times three scores, and it makes it even more difficult to interpret. But it is possible to be done, but it will always be inaccurate because of the sampling that we have. We have no ability whatsoever to get what we call a random sample, and therefore to create proper confidence intervals.
I was just curious, because usually you do see that in person. And just generally speaking, I think bullying and psychological wellness, I think we've done a tremendous job. 20 years ago, and we can't prove this at all, I don't think, but these numbers would be a lot higher. They'd be a lot higher. And I think we're in the right direction. We might not be at zero, but I don't think we'll ever get to zero. But we are improving every year on this issue. And it's more, it's in the public's face more, too. So that helps. But I think we're going in the right direction. And that's all we can ask for, I think. If we're, if these numbers are getting worse, we got a problem.
Correct.
But I just think we're doing a good job at this. And every year, I can see these numbers getting better. I don't think it's got anything to do with age, or how many years you've worked here, or what sex you are, or anything like that. You know, and I don't like being, having comparisons because, oh, because he's been here 30 years, he's more bullying. I don't even want to go that way. Anyways, just my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Conley. With the previous deputy mayor, Counselor Pesuda, if you would just put in a request there so you could take the chair for me for a minute, please. I'll activate you there. Thanks, Counselor Pesuda. Ms. Chairman, Chris, John, Laura, outstanding presentation. I agree with everyone's comments, especially Counselor Pearson's, about the video. That's the finest I've seen in the corporations produced. Chris, quickly to slides 24 and 25. 24, and I'll have a general question. So 24, the bottom two. So for me, Chris, you know what the headlines are in the past. Overall, doesn't matter, all the great production and overall satisfaction, Mr. Chairman, of our employees. But you know what the headline is? Morale. It tends to just, you know, that captures the attention of the media, not necessarily the overall public. But we always hear about if morale is good or not good within our corporation. So I just want to ask a question for clarity on number nine, proud to work here. And then flip over to 25, Chris, please. And then numbers eight and nine, recognition for my work, improve morale. So those three themes, Mr. Chairman, they're ranked near the bottom based on number of themes. Is that somewhat then surprising to you and Laura in terms of we would have expected more people, more of our employees, to respond on those three of truly morale and recognize for my work and feeling like they're being listened to was incredibly important? Or how am I to interpret those three that, for me, Mr. Chairman, are centered around the morale issue? I hope you folks are understanding the essence of my question.
Through you, acting deputy mayor, I think I do understand the essence of your question. So it's probably the way that you see it here. On one hand, our greatest strengths, and again, these are written comments. These are, we, in a survey like this, we leave space for people to write down whatever strikes them. And so in terms of, you know, the comments that we received, and you can see there was 3,390 comments, and which, you know, related to 6,600 approximate themes. So what we're hearing here, the top 10, was that there, you know, themes that we collected that, you know, in the top 10 is proud to work here, positive work environment. So some people wrote that, you know. And then we had, we go to the next slide, and some people in their, you know, written comments wrote that better recognition of my work, which there's other parts of this presentation that we do actually speak to that. I don't disagree. I think we have to do more to recognize people on a day-to-day. I mean, I know what I do in terms of the city matters, city manager awards, but there's probably other things that we should be doing departmentally, divisionally. You know, and sometimes recognition is just a simple thank you. So I think that's what we're going to find out when we start taking the survey to the frontline to find out, you know, we want to do a better job in recognition of work. Let us understand what the concern is, and then maybe we can figure out how to address that. But, you know, there is a number of people that wrote that down. And then improve morale. I mean, you know, I got to expect in an organization that's this big and this diverse, that there's going to be a number of people that, you know, morale will be an issue for. So, I mean, I would, I mean, the media, you know, they're listening online, whatever like that. I mean, you're gonna, it's not impossible, but it's, I would think it's a bit of a stretch to suggest that these surveys or results are saying that this organization isn't moving in a reasonably good direction. But at the same time, I love the fact that there are some challenges that we have to go address, and that we will take them seriously. And, you know, and then in three years, we'll survey again. I expect we'll be better. And so the fact that there's some, you know, you know, need of improvement ranked themes, fair enough. And that's, that's a person's right to identify these things, and it's our right to go talk to them and see what we can do to fix them. So...
Chris, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I was just trying to, I thought that that improve morale, and then the other two on the previous page about pride in employment and feeling they're being listened to, a better recognition. I was joining those three dots, connecting them as feeling, Mr. Chairman, those were beyond wages and benefits, which is number one for feeding families, absolutely. But I was joining those three overall, always from time to time, hearing the morale theme of how our 7,800-plus employees overall feel about working in this corporation.
If I can just on this, I gotta, you know, there's, I just want to, just hang on here. Just want to take us to the overall internal results. As a city manager, when I saw this for the first time, the number one, people felt very high about, very positive job clarity. In my world, you know what's expected of them. That's what that tells you. Of the 4,800 people that filled out the survey, a high, high, high percentage of them are saying that job clarity, it's clear. That's good. If you're paying people to do something, they better understand what it is you expect them to do. I'm incredibly proud of the fact that customer, client, citizen service is important to them. We're in the civil, we're the civil service, we're the public service. The fact that that is number two in their minds is profoundly important, and I'm incredibly proud of that. You know, the support for diversity in a town like Hamilton, which is incredibly diverse, I think that's a very strong statement. Pride in team, division, department, my work contributes to the city's vision, would recommend the city as an employer. I can't underscore that. You know, this is, in their moment to fill out and answer those questions, the question is being asked them, would you recommend this employer to others? And yeah, it is about pay and benefits. But there's actually other reasons why people feel the way they feel. And yeah, we have some work to do in terms of feedback to employees when they do great things. You know, right. And that's a fair comment. But you'd have to do some serious gymnastics, mental gymnastics, to take these results and turn this into nothing but a negative.
Now, Chris, I was anticipating, both reflecting on the past, Mr. Chairman, of what makes a headline, and anticipating for the future, and it always just seems to be around the word morale. I think this is, I am so encouraged, Mr. Chairman, by the results of our people's survey. It's been an outstanding outline of exactly where we stand as a corporation, and that the frontline employees overall, with middle and upper management through SLT and right into council, feel like that we're part of a team that is moving this successful, great city continuously forward. So I just want, Chris, as I often do, I just like to anticipate and get ahead of how we would answer that in joining those dots about maybe needing more recognition, proving morale, and about a feeling that they've been listened to. But, Chris, I just, thank you for your answers. And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to finish by saying, on visiting employees and/or doing tours, I've done that in the past, not that I can't do it in the future, but I've done the ride-alongs when I was on the police board. I have visited various sites, of course, regularly at places like McCassel, Wentworth Lodge, Sackville. I'll just offer a little different twist that I've done over the years. In my kind of tri-party approach between my office, the citizens, and city staff, I like bringing them all together on various projects, task forces, whether it's a new park development. I love setting up those kind of all-players meetings with the citizens, city staff, and my office to see how we can collaboratively work best together. So it may not be a direct tour of the water plant, but if I can get that water facility guy up to a neighborhood where they've experienced some difficulties in flooding, in either a town hall meeting or a setting with citizens, I've always promoted that. So
And that works beautiful.
I just think that's a thought, too.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll take the chair back. No further questions or comments. Thank you, Chris. So I need a motion to both receive the presentation, move by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. An item, I believe it is, is the one information report from the same team, a motion to receive the report. Counselor Conley, Counselor Ferguson, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. No notices of motion or motions? Motion to adjourn? Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Collins, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Chris, Laura, John, and the entire SLT, great work. Thank you.